Okay, 5:02. I would like to call the PRL meeting to order. And first item will be to approve the minutes of September 9th, 2019.
It's almost second.
First and the second, any comments on? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, legislative update. So there were a series of items that, actually when I printed this, they were in discussion in the senate, and I just saw an update that these were all passed this last week in the Wisconsin senate. And there's a couple of them that I thought were noteworthy. Some of them really, I'm sure that they all will apply at some level. One of them that came up, and I know we just had, I thought we just had discussions not too long ago, but it had to do with the current law. Of the president of the district must notify each board member in writing for the time and place of special meeting of the board at least 24 hours before. And then it must be delivered personally to each board member or left at or mailed by first-class mail to our usual place of abode. Which I thought was interesting phrasing, but...
It says abode?
It actually says abode. Yeah, rather than just mail it to the house. But anyways, so under the new, the proposed language which was approved, the district's president, it says, well, I'm sorry, school district clerk, or in the clerk's absence, the school district president to notify each board member of the meeting in a manner likely to give the member notice of the meeting. So to me, I just read that as it's kind of taking us to 2019 in the electronic age and not requiring carrier pigeons to drop something at our door. So, that was one of them. The second one had to do with relating to pupil records. And I know that we've had discussions about this one historically. And under the current law, pupil records are generally confidential, one exception to this. And I think I recall Jeff talking through this, Jeff Lindell, a few years ago. One exception to this is directory data. And directory data may be disclosed to any person if a public school notifies parents and guardians of the categories of the pupil information designated as directory data. And provided that there are opt-out procedures for such disclosures, and we provide time to utilize the opt-out procedure. And again, the current law for directory data includes pupil's name, address, telephone number, date, place of birth, major field of study, participation, and officially-recognized activities, dates of attendance, photographs, weight, height, as a member of an athletic team, degrees and awards, and the school the pupil attended most recently. I did not know that that included, was all in the directory data. I thought the discussion that we had had a few years ago was that it was name and grade and potentially address. I don't recall that being that extensive.
We did. We, yeah, we looked at it down to name, I think, and address, is all.
Okay.
But, no, are you saying that we're required to provide all the rest of that?
You're right, the school board did take additional action to further restrict directory data. That's what the statute says, but school districts have authority to further limit, which you did.
That's okay.
It is okay.
Good. So this bill adds parents and/or guardians' information to that.
Wow. That's a lot of information.
It is, and especially when you start, well, parents or guardians, so I don't know if that's something that we want to consider to adding to that listing that you were referencing in terms of editing essentially what is available and keeping parents or guardians' names off of there.
Do you think this stems from the days when everything was published in the paper, like pictures and this person and the daughter or son of this person?
I don't know. That's a good question. There was really no more, no more commentary on it other than they wanted to include parents' names now, so maybe that's something we can add to a future PRO and have a discussion about that one.
It'll come up in our policy.
It will.
Which series is that in? That would be, let's see. Hmm? Is it students? It'd be students, so that could be tonight.
So that's what we're on?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah.
Timing.
Okay. I don't remember seeing.
I don't think it is. Amy and I just talked about this one, though. It might be...
It is in the five.
Is it in the five?
I guess right there.
All right, the next one has to do with fire, tornado, and school safety drills. And then, I don't know that this includes, what do we call them, the active shooter drills, or maybe we have a different name for them.
Alice drills.
Alice drills. It doesn't state that in here, but essentially, the proposed change is under the current law, the person having direct charge of any public or private school must drill all pupils in what to do in the case of a fire, tornado, and school safety incident. School law requires, current law requires that these drills be conducted without previous warning. Under this bill, the person having direct charge of the public or private school may provide previous warning of any of these drills if he or she determines that providing the previous warning is in the best interest of pupils attending the school. So essentially, I read that as opening up discretion to the principal or administration as to whether or not they want to notify. And the last one has to do with teacher licensing. And I know that we have had that discussion now and again. And this one, it creates, this particular bill creates an alternative method for meeting one requirement for receiving a DPI teaching license based on having an out-of-state license, referred to as a license based on reciprocity. Under current law, the DPI must issue an initial teaching license based on reciprocity to a teacher who either holds a teaching license from another state, is in good standing in that state, and has taught for at least one year under the out-of-state license. This particular bill allows a person to receive a teaching license based on reciprocity if the person taught two semesters under a DPI license or permit as an alternative to teaching for one year under the out-of-state license. So it sounds to me it's just kind of loosening up the restrictions again.
Yeah, trying to address that, that issue where you have people coming over from, yeah, a neighboring state and then they have to, you know, they aren't able to get a license when they've been certified in another state. Yeah, we would support that.
Okay. And this one did have one amendment from the assembly that they want to provide in addition to a school district or charter school, a cooperative educational service agency, or a CISA, or private school employing a person may also notify DPI that the person successfully completed two semesters of teaching experience as defined by the DPI rule. So...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but the directory information is in the 8,000 series. So it was not in the 5,000.
Do you know the specific number, Angie?
It's 8330, so it's under student records.
Thank you. All right, any other questions, thoughts on any legislative items? Bob, I hate to turn to you automatically, but you're usually our fountain of knowledge there, so anything come to mind?
4K, perhaps, a full day of 4K they're talking about. Both houses are introducing a separate bill, and we'll see where that goes.
Do we have space for that?
No.
Not random.
We have community partners, and we have a few other things that we could leverage, and it's not going to happen overnight. We'll have time to react, and we'll see where it goes. We'll keep an eye on it, though.
Okay. All right. If nothing else, we can move on to item four, public and student comment. Do we have anyone signed up?
No.
No one signed up. Awesome. Number five, Mr. Nyman will take us through an Act 31 presentation along with Mr. Weber, Andrea Sheridan. Take it away.
Well, thank you. Tonight, the Ed Department's going to give a little presentation on Indigenous People Day. I think it's appropriate that we talk about American Indian Studies in Wisconsin, which is also known as Wisconsin Act 31. And so, just to give a little bit of background on Act 31, going back in time, in the 1800s, there's a series of four treaties in which land was ceded by the Great Lakes tribes to the US government. In return, they were given the right to hunt, fish, and gather on those lands. And over time, those were not enforced the way they were allowed, the way they were supposed to be allowed. And in 1983, jumping way ahead, there was a decision called the Voight case, in which that was reaffirmed that the Great Lakes tribes had that right to hunt, gather, and fish on these lands. And growing up in northern Wisconsin at that time, I remember the outcry that took place during that time at the boat landings, and it was kind of an ugly time in our history. Tried to bridge that divide in 1989, the state legislature enacted Act 31. And in it, it said that it needed, the schools, public schools needed to teach American Indian Studies at the elementary and at the high school level. And that had to begin by 1991, so with the 1991, 92 school year, that became mandatory. So, always for 30 years, now this has been in place.
Paul, I'm sorry to interrupt, I just want to clarify the law. It requires that all 11 federally-recognized tribes are taught twice in the elementary schools and once in the secondary. It's not just a general. I just want to make sure that we all have that clarification.
I believe that's on the next slide.
On the next slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's all. So with that in mind, or do you want me to finish up?
Yeah.
Okay. So it requires that all public schools provide instruction in history, sovereignty, and culture of the 11 federally-recognized tribes and bands in Wisconsin. They must be included in the curriculum at least twice during the elementary years and once in the high school. And now, Wisconsin teachers also must be instructed in these topics before acquiring their license. So that's kind of the crux of it. I'm going to turn it over to Chris here.
Sure. And just very quickly, Paul alluded to this on the last slide, the last bullet on the last slide, just professional licensure requirements. So all educators in the state of Wisconsin are required to demonstrate knowledge and understanding of the history and cultural and tribal sovereignty of American Indian tribes and bands located in Wisconsin. There are a host of other bullets there listed below that don't necessarily directly relate to Native American studies. I wanted to highlight some that we will make available to our district staff here. So on December 10th, Tuesday, December 10th, through our partnership with CISA9, there will be a full-day workshop offered by David O'Connor. And that opportunity will be made available to our staff, as we have many offerings that are made available through CISA9.
So, question, David O'Connor had reached out, and I don't know if the message had gotten to you, and he had offered to come up earlier this year. So is he coming to Wassa, or is that going to be?
It's going to be actually at CISA9.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it'll be available to employees from all the districts that are serviced by CISA9.
I know that from personal conversation with David, he is willing to come specifically to Wassa. He's even willing to make himself available on the weekends, just if you haven't had that conversation with him, I know that he is.
Do you know if board members will be allowed?
I'm not sure if that information is typically shared with board members, but I certainly can extend, I can certainly inquire. Yeah, I don't know why, there would be a reason why. I don't know what the reason would be for you not to be able to attend.
Well, there might not be room, but if there were room...
Okay, sure. Yeah, I can ask.
Thanks.
So I'd like to take the opportunity to highlight some of our elementary curriculum alignments that we have in kindergarten through grade five, as it relates to Native American education. We introduce the topic already in kindergarten and first grade, and that occurs both in core classrooms, regular ed classrooms, as well as encore. Specifically, our library media specialists and others within that capacity have available read aloud texts. We can incorporate it through writings and other avenues of learning. And then in second grade, we have a resource called the Hard Court Horizons, which you'll see in third and fifth as well. What we tried to do was share with you specifically how many topics within that research, occurring in that resource within a year, are made available to the classroom teachers, and then they incorporate them throughout, whether it's in social studies classes specifically, or again, we encourage interdisciplinary literacy learning, so a lot of times then it's incorporated within, let's say, our Wonders curriculum, which is in grades three through five. And I'd like to highlight in fourth grade, as many if not all of you are aware, we focus on the history of Wisconsin. That's our topic of learning through social studies, also incorporated throughout literacy lessons. We utilize two resources, the Wisconsin Journey book, and then we also have purchased, and I brought a copy, should anybody want to see it, Native People of Wisconsin by Patty Lowe. We have a teacher guide available with a lot of information and activities available for an educator. And then we also have the supplemental guide that would be available for our students. So, we've had this resource available since around 2007 in all of our fourth-grade classrooms. So that's supplemental to our Wisconsin Journeys resource that we utilize at that...
Does that come from the Historical Society?
Yes, it does.
I think I've met Patty Lowe before, and she's very well-respected.
And I've been in fourth-grade classrooms and watched teachers utilize and/or students this resource. It's very well-received, so that is learning that happens in fourth grade as well. And just to share with you in the Hard Court Horizons resources, the different topics that are covered, agriculture, ancestors, cities, clothing, crafts, culture, government, heroes, hunting, leaders, powwows, religion, shelters, tools, and trade. Just write that down, because there was a lot. But I wanted to make sure that we highlight what's included within the resources that we have. In addition, I mentioned already the Wonders resource, which we utilize in three, four, and five. I've worked with both our internal literacy coaches, as well as our representative for that resource. There's a crosswalk between literacy units and essential questions as it relates to social studies topics. So there are actually texts and other read-alouds available that our teachers can utilize, as well as books that we still have currently in our bookrooms, which are available to all of our educators as well. So we have a complement of different resources that can be accessed by any one of our educators, and then information shared in the different grades.
Andrea, just to get a clarification here, when you say six topics, 10 topics, 13 topics, now, did you say that six topics in second grade will be covered, or six topics are for teachers to choose from amongst?
No, for a guaranteed viable curriculum, we provide the resource and as well as the curriculum. So it's a guide. We've had Hard Court Horizons as our resource for many years. We need to have some potential updates when it comes to social studies standards. A newer resource has really not been presented or provided or even developed, so we're keeping our eyes open for that. So the topics that you see here, as I read kind of the list of extensive list of topics...
So they are all covered?
Yes, they keep kind of building and scaffolding, so we start with six topics introduced already in second grade with a totality of 13 by the time the kids are in fifth grade.
Okay. Is a topic a week's worth of instruction? Is it a day's worth of instruction?
You know, that's professional expertise of the teacher in the classroom. Some might be, let's say, in a textbook, maybe a page of information, but a teacher can take a page of information and maybe create a quite comprehensive lesson, or writing or something around it. Some might be three to five pages. We didn't break it out like that, but we thought it important to talk about the topics and how they continue to increase.
Okay, but so it could be substantial, it could be fairly insubstantial.
Yep, and that's where we have other resources available, like in the bookroom, or those books that might be available through Wonders, and all of that, again, comes together when a teacher might be doing a core study. And the topics integrated throughout kind of the year. So it's not as if, let's say, in September, for one week, there'd be all six topics. It really does incorporate throughout the entire, which is a best practice.
And we review that these things are being thoroughly covered, each one of them?
Yes.
Okay, so Andrea?
Yes.
With, this is more than twice in the elementary years. So are you saying that absolutely every elementary school covers this every grade?
Yes, it's part of our guaranteed viable curriculum.
And they cover the 11 federally-recognized tribes, how? How do we see from here that the 11 federally-recognized tribes, that required instruction is covered twice in the elementary school years? Because I can't see that from this. Is it each year?
That's an excellent question. I would have to go back and look. In this resource, we do find out the different tribes throughout.
I just wanted to add that I know that teachers use another resource called Wisconsin Media Lab, which is Wisconsin Public Television, and they have a lot of short videos. And I know that they cover all of the tribes, and I'm guessing that people take this and add to it.
I guess I'm just asking because we can't be guessing. It's well-known that Act 31 is not in compliance in a majority of the districts in the state. That's reported by DPI, that's reported by WASB. So it is incumbent on the Board of Education to ensure that it is complied with, and that's why I don't want to guess, I'm just curious. I can't see from this particular slide that we meet the requirements.
Sure. And the purchase of this resource, I will say, dated to me prior to joining the school district. So again, I know it was published in 2006, and then brought into the district shortly after that. Each chapter is on a different nation and then tribal information. I could go through certainly and pull out some more information and let you know. Be happy to do that.
I would think if it's produced by the Wisconsin...
No, I know Patty, she's excellent. I mean, she's acknowledged by Governor Evers in the executive order.
But what I was going to say is, if it's produced by the Wisconsin Historical Society, they're very familiar with Act 31, and I'm sure it includes what needs to be included to be in compliance.
But my question is, are we getting the twice in elementary school years? Because if we have one chapter, how do we know that it's being divided twice, or is it covered once? That's my question. We have to meet that twice in elementary school years. I need to try.
And because the book is in the room doesn't mean it's being used.
Tricia, do you know what twice means? When it says in the statute, twice, you know, that means what?
Well, presumably, if you're supposed to have education twice on all federally-recognized tribes in the elementary school years, that means learning twice about Menominee in grades K through five. Learning twice about Ho-Tunk Nation, learning twice about...
Could all 11 come up at least twice during those years?
Yes.
Okay. Andrea, you want to research that, come back and let us know where those two times occur? Thank you.
Let's probably assume that that twice is different years, would be my guess. I mean, technically, you could do twice within a week. You could do it on Monday, and you could do another lesson on Friday, and that would be twice, but...
Looking at that, I would say grade fours.
Fourth grade tends to be the focus across the state, but, yeah, we can look into that.
And I remember, Tricia, just because we reviewed materials together, so I do recall seeing the 11 federally-recognized tribes very explicitly laid out in grade four. And I do recall the 11 federally-recognized tribes being mentioned in grade two. Now, I don't know how in-depth the lesson was, because I didn't actually go to the TE and go through what opportunities there might be for enrichment or extension, but I do know that they were named very specifically in grade four. And I think at this point, it would be kind of looking for where, how specifically they're called on, and what's other grades to be called the second time.
How many non-federally-recognized tribes are in the state?
There's the Brotherton Band. They're seeking federal recognition. It's an exhaustive process.
And it's interesting, sometimes they're recognized and sometimes they're not. As Menominee Tribe was not recognized in 1954, and then became recognized in 1973, '74, 20 years later. So those are interesting historical events that a lot of people don't know about, you know, when you take a look at it. So we talked about 11 tribes, but there are 12 that are identified in the state of Wisconsin.
I'm not familiar with the environmental education curriculum that we use, but I know that in Everest, we covered some things when kids took their trips out to the school forest, and did activities, and built shelters, and stuff like that, and the history of, you know, where that came from. So I think it probably gets done in a variety of different ways to make it more meaningful for kids.
All right. Anything else on elementary?
Okay. At the second, and I have one that I added on later, it's on mine, but it's not up there, I'll go over it. It came a little late to me. But at the eighth-grade level, we have a two-week anthropology unit, which includes the concepts of sovereignty, treaties, reservations, the different tribes and bands in Wisconsin, and territoriality. And then it gets covered again at the ninth grade, where it's woven more into the history, US history itself, where they cover it in early exploration, Road of Revolution, and westward expansion, in both US History 1 and 2. And once again, they hit the history, the culture, and the sovereignty throughout the school year. Also, we have multi-literature class at the 11th and 12th grade, in which Native American literature is read and discussed. And I got some information back a little late for the middle school as well, where they're in their ELA classes, and they bring in Native American literature as well.
What does the statute say about secondary?
Once in secondary.
Once in, okay. I think that was the end, wasn't it, if I remember correctly? All right, good. All right.
Well, thank you.
So based on this, is it our assumption that we are meeting the requirements of the statute for Act 31?
It just seems like it would be easy, I'm not saying easy, but it seems like it wouldn't be too complicated to create an Excel spreadsheet with the 11 federally-recognized tribes, and then be able to just very clearly checkmark where that, those three occurrences happen throughout, between the elementary and secondary levels.
Sounds like two are pretty obvious, but that second one in the elementary is the one that we're not sure of, so let's check on that.
Okay.
I appreciate that, because, you know, the lack of compliance throughout the state is definitely problematic, and I appreciate that we are making sure we are in compliance.
All right. Moving on to item number six, our newest best friend, Neola Policies.
They are our newest best friend. Thank you for introducing them as such.
Absolutely.
So we're going to try a little bit different format tonight. We've done this a few different ways. I asked board members to kind of review the 5,000s and send me some questions, and I got several of them. Many of them were strictly editorial, and I made those, I made those changes already. You won't see them tonight, because I didn't change the attachment, but those will certainly be in the next, in the next rendition. One question was around 5112 that I wanted to point out. This is about entrance age. Pardon me while I move ahead to that. It was a question about, here we go, about appeal. And I noticed in here that the, we have two options for appeal. By the way, I was speaking with Andrea, we have a very thorough screening of children as they come into kindergarten and first grade. Occasionally, there'll be a disagreement, you know, our school psychologists do some screenings. In first grade, there's actually a trial period, is it first grade or kindergarten? The trial where the student attends, and then we revisit with the parents. We were talking earlier today.
No, you were talking to me.
I was talking to you, or that's why you're looking at me, like, what are you talking about?
Yeah, this is such a great area, because five-year-olds are not required to go to school. So if parents choose not to have their five-year-old in kindergarten, and they don't turn six until the summer before they're in first grade, then we have to make a decision on whether they can go into first grade or kindergarten. And a lot of times, what we do is, we give them a six-week trial in first grade, because we would like to keep them with their same-age peers, to see if they have the skills or not. And then after that six weeks, we revisit. And a lot of times, you know, they've received some sort of homeschooling or something when they're five, so if they do have the skills, they may be lagging just a little bit, but we're able to easily get them caught up.
Yeah, so in that case, if there was a disagreement with a parent, we want to give them an appeal option. And the option number one is, would be to appeal to my office. Option number two would be to appeal to the school board. It's not cross, option number two is the school board option, it's not cross off there, but we would recommend that that appeal go to my office, and there would be a second evaluation. But I just want to make sure that's...
It makes complete sense.
Okay with the board.
You're in a better position than we are to judge that.
I figured that would be a tough one for board members to evaluate.
Absolutely.
That's not a board function. Okay, all right, all right. So that was a question on 5112. And then, 5121, see if I can get lucky and hit that one. What did I just miss? 5121, did I go too far?
Yeah, you're on 36.
Thank you. 5121 is about postgraduate and older students. And the question was, do we, sorry, I'll get there. And the question was, do we, sorry, I'll get there. The question was about, do we allow students to, you know, beyond age twenty, to actually do any like postgraduate work and in what circumstance? And frankly, the only time we really have students beyond age eighteen, beyond their graduating class, is if they're special education. So upon further review, we're going to recommend that we reject fifty-one twenty-one as opposed to what you see in that, in your packet. I don't know if that raises questions?
Well, I can think of an example. My father-in-law fought in World War II and he hadn't graduated from high school and came back after serving for three years and then finished at Wausa East. So I think that's maybe where policy like this might come from.
There's also a second policy that deals specifically with diplomas for veterans. I believe that's in the nine thousands, which you haven't seen yet.
Okay.
And that would be, that wouldn't be postgraduate studies, that would be.
Correct. Right.
But let's just say someone does join the military and they haven't, is high school graduation requirement for joining the service?
I believe it is not.
It's not an issue.
So Keith, what does this look like? I mean, is this like somebody that wants to try to take AP or IB and test out, is that what this is?
You know.
When they're, when they've graduated already?
Frankly, I've never had anyone ask that of me, so this is a little bit of a new situation. And frankly, the policy didn't give us a lot of direction, which is part of the reason we're going to recommend we reject it. It doesn't seem to be helpful to us at this point.
Well, I was wondering, what about the kid who's been homeschooled, turns eighteen and knows he has not gotten to the level he needs to be? Can he come to the public school at eighteen and say, help me out?
Enroll me.
Because he's not gonna have a degree.
Right. You know, they could, they could make the request. That would be on a case-by-case basis because it would depend on their skill. Do they have any credits? Do they have any opportunity to graduate? Otherwise, we would probably recommend they go an alternate route like HSCD or something like that.
Seems like the tech is set up.
Yeah.
For that kind of thing, for kids who aren't quite ready to, like they have a program. And that might be a better fit.
The next one I'm gonna jump to is fifty-eight eighty. Does anybody have questions on policies between fifty-one twenty and fifty-eight eighty?
Just had one question and I apologize, I didn't get a chance to review it until the day. I wasn't sure, but there are the programs on homelessness and then there's another one that's a little bit later that comes in on cooperation with government agencies. And it seems to me that there's not much in there about cooperation with the Department of Health and Social Services. Because it would seem to me that if a child, if there are people who are homeless and that we should be working with the social services directly. And then when we talk about government agencies, we're talking about law enforcement primarily, but the social services certainly is directly involved in those and they're not referenced at all.
Okay. So I know the Homeless Act is really that McKinney-Vento Act and I know we also work very closely with our social services. Can you remember what number that was, Lee, which policy number?
No.
Oh, okay.
And we struggle with, some families don't want to tell us they're homeless because they're afraid that social services are going to get involved. They're afraid it's a reflection on their parenting or their family situation. So our social workers within our district work very closely with our homeless population and then if they need additional social services support, then we would refer them to social services. So that might be why it's not directly.
So instead of being in a policy, you just have a working relationship with the social workers and the agencies? I mean, you have working relationships with Wausa East.
Right. Yeah. And because we have our own social workers in district, they work with all outside agencies when necessary and when appropriate.
I assume that, I just, I was aware that it was not mentioned and it seems to be, that is a governmental agency that we should be cooperating with.
Cass, would you mind making a note about the homeless? We'll go back and make sure that that's.
I'm trying to find the reference.
Okay, thank you.
It's a fairly early.
Keith, I did have one question too on the earlier one, fifty-four fifty-one.
All right.
It's on student recognition. The proposal is to reject this one. It's the board values excellence and wishes to recognize students, the desire to do their best in all things. Shall be the policy of the board therefore to recognize outstanding accomplishments in curricular, co-curricular, extracurricular areas. Authorized district administrator develop a plan for recognition. Says we're gonna reject this. So is this, like, I know some school districts have gotten away from valedictorians or all this other, you know, salutatorians so they don't make people feel bad for doing good?
Right.
That's not this, is it?
No, no. This is simply saying, we will continue to recognize students. We didn't think we needed a policy to tell us to do so.
Okay.
It's kind of like when you reject the policies that are like state statute. Similar situation is just.
Yeah. And I don't, frankly, I don't recall who amended that or edited that one. Anybody has any insights into other reasons?
Well, because there's a fifty-four fifty-one point zero one, the next one.
Okay. And we, that's right. We incorporated it into that, didn't we?
Okay, I just didn't want, I wanted to make sure we weren't going down that path where everybody gets the participation ribbon.
Right. Okay, did they go into tech, excellence? Did they go into that policy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so they combined it.
Thank you.
Yep. Instead of fumbling up there, I will tell you that fifty-eight eighty, there was just a question about approval of out-of-state performances. And there were three approvals listed, principal, the director of fine arts, and the district administrator. And there was a question about whether that was all necessary. In our current policy, it's just the principal. So I tended to agree and I removed district administrator, left principal and fine arts coordinator. And I think that's more for communication purposes, just to make sure they are both aware. That's why I would wanna leave it in there.
Yeah, and that was my question. I just thought it was odd that we required approval of the principal and the district administrator because the district administrator supervises the principal. So like, why would you need both of them?
Right.
But go on this route is fine.
Well, we had that in-state and out-of-state distinction in trips as well, student trips. And is there, is there any kind of, is there a legal reason why we need to distinguish between in-state and out-of-state because it's not necessarily distance?
Not that I'm aware of. I think that's just been school policies, that if they leave the state, there seems to be a greater need for notification. I know in Ashland, we actually had board approval for out-of-state. It was simply really communication piece. Yeah. We also didn't have, you know, it didn't happen that often.
And the way you're thinking about it is exactly at the last place I was at. We eliminated that and had the principal make that decision based on the fact that all the details that came to him.
Right, yes.
For her, yes.
And then when you're done with this, I wanted to go back to fifty-five eleven.
Sure.
Dressing grooming.
Any other questions on that approval piece? Okay. Fifty-five eleven, Jane?
Yeah. I just think, because I went looking at our different handbooks for our schools and Wausa West is very different than Wausa East. And our, the dress code and stuff that we have is kind of sexist.
Okay.
And I believe it was somewhere in Virginia, they came up with a dress code that is gender-neutral. It just basically says you're covered from here to here and you have to have straps on your shirt or top or whatever. And it just seems to me that that's the way we need to go. And it should be in the same place in all handbooks.
So how is our sexist, the Wausa West one?
Well, it talks about, you know, girls have to have straps of certain width and dresses have to be to a certain length on their thighs. And it, and it's, it's very oddly worded. It says something like, your bottom has to be covered, but we don't talk about guys having to wear shorts of certain length.
So, so what Jane is talking about is the, it was Seattle. I knew and I had talked about that, but it's, it was basically an image. So instead of, instead of calling out a specific gender, which ended up being disproportionately female clothing, it was just, you have to have straps, a certain amount, you have to have a certain length. And that way it was, as long as you have this amount covered, you're, you're fine.
So Jane, just for clarification, was that in this policy or just in the handbooks?
It's in the handbooks. And that was my other question, was that we were gonna designate the principal as the arbitrator, arbiter of dress code and grooming. And if we're not gonna give them a very specific what has to be covered and whatnot, it can vary wildly from building to building.
Did the policy work for you and we need to look at the, at the handbooks later?
Well, they kind of go hand in hand because if we're gonna let the principal be in charge, then there has to be really pretty set in stone guidelines of what they're enforcing.
So isn't that where the width of the straps and the length of things come in?
Yes, but are, the way they are in, they're not here.
So the sexist part is that there's more requirements for females than there is male?
Yes. It talks about cleavage and having their bottom covered in a skirt length and.
And they're also not the same in the, in the high schools, which does seem to make sense. I mean, grades nine through twelve, we should have a uniform policy that's in either handbook.
And there has to be more information for an appeal process.
So fifty-five eleven says the district administrator shall develop administrative guidelines. So that should be the same at grade level throughout the district. And then designate the principal as the arbiter of student dress and grooming in his or her building, which means the principal can determine if the policy is being adhered, if the guidelines are being adhered to or not.
Right.
And of course, this speaks not necessarily to those issues, but more to the what constitutes a hazard, what constitutes a.
Disruption.
Damage, a disruption.
Well, if we, so if we approve this, it's basically going to require you to develop the guidelines that would apply to both schools then?
Correct.
It would no longer be anyone else's.
Right.
You'd be developing those guidelines for both schools. And I assume you wouldn't make them different, so.
I would not.
And that's when we get to whenever that's gonna happen about the handbooks and websites that are being redone, there has to be uniformity. Because finding stuff at one school is really easy and impossible at another.
Okay. So the policy works and it would lead to kind of where the conversation is.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good, thank you. Other questions that were concerns that board members had on the five thousand series? I'll talk a little bit more just about this process in general. So Tricia and Pat and I met last week. We talked about this process. It's, it's taking a long time, which is okay. We wanna, because frankly, we really appreciate your very serious review of the, of the policies. Every time we've had a workshop, a meeting, you've been very well-prepared, had really good questions and we appreciate that. We also noted that in, in a lot of those workshops, we spend a lot of time just kind of flipping through policies that just kind of, you know, that you are perfectly fine with the, the content. We're proposing that we have one more workshop on November four, where we take the rest of the policies in the, in the practice we just did now, where we would just review those that the board members have questions or concerns about. We would assume the rest are approvable, right? Agreeable. And then we would move the full slate of policies for approval in that December timeframe as we had originally discussed, if the board's comfortable with that process.
I'm comfortable with that process if we get them within enough time that.
Yeah.
We have time to get through all of them.
We were hoping for at least two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we'd also bring back those that you've had questions on that we haven't brought back yet. They're, they, if all, I believe all of them have been answered. They might be wanting to, we'll finish those up and bring those as well.
Okay, we have four more series to go through?
Correct. Six, seven, eight, and nine.
Wow, how many pages does that amount?
Oh, nines are short. Any idea, Cassie?
Eights are kind of long. Bobs up is long.
Yeah.
Well, we did, we did. Between ninety and.
And each one's averaged two pages long. Yeah. It's hundreds.
Okay, right, because we've been between like ninety and a hundred and fifty pages per. And so really, the question is, how much can we handle and get our homework done at a time? So one meeting to go through four hundred pages, I think, three hundred pages, might.
Well, so we would have to go through those three or four hundred pages on our own.
Right.
If we get them in advance and then we send the questions to.
No, no, I understand that, but what I'm saying is that.
So it might be twenty or four, twenty to forty pages that we're really addressing in the meeting.
Right. I'm worried about the meeting, I'm worried about the homework time ahead of the meeting. And that we certainly couldn't do it all within one week on our own time or maybe not even within two. That's a lot to cover.
Yeah. We have most of these drafted already. There's a couple that have required more homework, more research. What we could do is, is, is series are completed and I believe, for instance, I could send you the nines tomorrow. I think this, I forget which ones are complete. We'll send you those series as we complete them. Expedite the process. Then you could, you know, review those. We'll send you two, I think we have two full series done that we could send you this week. And then we would have probably two that we could send you in a couple more weeks and maybe.
Because the fourth is three weeks away.
Yeah, so that's, that's the concern.
Is it three weeks away already?
Mm-hmm. That's the concern here.
What's dragging the fast pace? Is there some kind of deadline that we're trying to meet?
Yeah.
We went along that way.
They really wanted to slow it down. And frankly.
I'd rather slow it down.
And if you would, this is certainly, this is just a recommendation. Two reasons. One, if you remember, the whole reason we're shifting to Neola is risk management. And so the sooner we get the, the policies approved, the sooner we've, you know, better managed our risks. Secondly, we will, we will likely have an update in December or January. If the approval happens before that, then we're right on to the cycle. If it happens after that, we'd have to wait for that. I would just recommend then that we incorporate that last or that first update right into the process before we approve all the policies.
And I would think that if going back through any of this stuff that we've already passed, if there's something glaring, like right now, I'm looking at the corporal punishment one and it doesn't make any sense, that we could bring it back and do a redo.
Anytime.
Well, we're gonna, yeah, I mean, none of these have been actually approved yet. We've all just had sort of our kind of, you know, yeah, go ahead, but we still are gonna have that one final time where we actually vote, so.
And we feel like using this new process, we understand that the fourth is an ambitious goal, absolutely. And if we accomplish that, fantastic. If we don't, the world doesn't stop spinning.
Right.
So, I mean, it, it would be nice to get this done with and move on for the reasons that everybody mentioned, but if we don't, we don't.
Right. So once it's approved, we can always, Jane, kind of going back to what you just said, we can always go back and review the policies and it's going to be, you're going to continue to have a review throughout the year, they're going to have a review, so.
That's essentially what this meeting has been for the eight years I've been here.
Right, yeah, yes.
Just cycling through.
Yeah.
With varying degrees of success, I would say.
Are you comfortable seeing what we can get done on the fourth? And see how you feel about it?
Could I suggest a change to the fifty-six thirty, the corporal punishment one?
Sure.
Just to add, and use of force or something to it? Because the corporal punishment is covered in the first line and then we get into use of force to prevent somebody from hurting themselves or hurting someone else. It's not punishment.
Maybe the CPI or something is more appropriate. Are you talking about renaming the policy perhaps even?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I don't believe we practice corporal punishment.
No, no, it's covered in the first one, saying we don't condone it, so.
Right. Yeah, we can look at that, thank you. The names would have to be changed on Neola's end because they name their policies based on the numbers, but yes, we can. Did you catch that, Cassie?
What was the number one more time?
Fifty-six thirty.
Thank you.
Well, corporal punishment slash use of force, anything.
All right. Any other comments regarding Neola Policies?
All right. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thanks, Keith and everyone else. All right, with that, I will see the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
In favor? I oppose. We are adjourned.
In favor, I oppose, we are adjourned.